Can we vote American?
It is, it's starting.
Okay, we'll open up this meeting September 25th. We have a quorum. Uh, we have to start off with a public hearing uh for Harvard Road. Let me just read this off. In accordance with Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty A, section eleven notices hereby given, Bolton Plan and Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 25th, 2019 at seven thirty PM in the Board Selecting Room of the Town Hall, 6663 Main Street, Bolton, Mass. To hear and act upon the application of Brian and Karen LaFlame, 125 Harvard Road, Bolton, Mass., zero one seven four zero. The applicant is seeking a backland lot special permanent pursuant to section two fifty dash thirteen of the Code of Town in Bolton and Bolton's residential zoning district to divide parcels located on Harvard Road identified on assessors map five C as parcels one seventy-six and one seventy-seven into a single backland lot.
All right, Dushan, Dushan Mills, this is Brian LaFlam. And essentially, what we're looking to do is a lot consolidation plan, but because it involves a backland special permanent lot, you know, we have to do the full application. Um, if you remember back, we had a four lot subdivision here. Uh, it was two frontage lots, and then we had
Two in the back.
A couple of backland lots that had a shared driveway that went out to it. Uh, currently, Brian lives, he actually lives in this lot here. And they ended up purchasing both backland lots. And what they want to do is they want to construct a house and a barn and basically use all the land. So in order to do that, and having it be two separate lots, obviously, we're dealing with a fifty-foot property line offset to a structure. So with how they want to lay out the house and the barn, um, it makes sense to just combine the two lots into one single lot, so that's really what we're doing. So obviously, there were two backland lots before, so putting this together, obviously, we had, we exceed the minimum requirements, uh, we exceed the frontage. Now it has a hundred and two feet of frontage. Um, it's nine point eight, eight acres.
It was fine to me, no issues.
Oh, you want to make a motion?
Sure.
Go for it.
Make a motion to approve the lot consolidation plan dated July twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen for the combination of lots, was it, of parcels one seventy-six and one seventy-seven into a single backland lot.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I've seen that. Trying to drive by the driveway every day and wondering what's going on down there.
Yeah.
You can go look.
Yeah, well, the original Matt Jackson, I mean, he started that driveway quite a while ago. It's sitting.
It was always kind of two, like segmented lots? This was this lot, and then this was this one?
Well, divided up.
Um.
Oh, it's divided up.
A little bit, I think, interesting, it's a conservation restriction.
Oh, maybe that's it. Gotcha, okay.
It's actually a duty restriction.
All right.
Very much.
Eric, Eric, we also need a motion to close the hearing.
Oh.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
On favor? You want to need one of these copies?
I'm good.
And then I'll, um, I'll draft, I haven't drafted, drafted the decision yet. So I will do that and then, um, send it to the board for your review prior to. I assume Eric, do you want to sign on behalf of the board? I had written out just the signage sheet, but I didn't realize James wasn't going to be present.
Whatever works. Do it to vote on that.
Yeah, let's have to take a vote then.
Okay.
So what do, I'm sorry.
Just make the motion that I can sign for the board.
I'll make a motion that Eric can sign for the board for the, um, backland, what was it?
Consolidation.
Consolidation of the, um, what?
It's for a backland lot.
For the backland lot special permanent. Thank you.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Um, okay. Open up the next hearing. And I'll open it up, but just so people know, um, DPW did pull it. Let me just open, I have to open it up anyway. In accordance with Massachusetts general laws, uh, chapter eighty-seven, public shade tree law, section three, cutting on public shade trees, hearings damages. And Mass General Law, chapter forty, section fifteen C and section two fifty dash twenty-four of the Bolton zoning bylaws, scenic roads. The Town and Bolton Tree Ward and Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, at seven forty-five PM at the Bolton Town Hall, 6663 Main Street, Bolton, Mass. Regarding application of the Bolton, uh, DPW to remove twenty-one public shade trees from Anymore Road. These trees are located between utility poles three and a half through nineteen and identified as follows. Three dollars. One, one thirty-inch diameter oak, one thirty-seven inch diameter oak, one thirty-six, uh, inch diameter oak, uh, one thirty-one diameter oak, one thirty-six diameter oak, one twenty-three inch, one, uh, two, twenty-one inches, one twenty-inch oak, one nineteen-inch oak, one eighteen-inch oak, and one thirteen, thirteen-inch oak, one, uh, twenty-two inch, uh, hickory, nineteen-inch hickory, sixteen-inch hickory, fourteen-inch hickory, eleven-inch hickory, eighteen-inch diameter maple, and one fifteen-inch diameter maple, oh, what is it? And one fourteen-inch maple and one thirteen-inch elk. So, as we said, uh, DPW pulled this, um, for whatever reasons. So I don't think we have to discuss too much. I think we have Mark Kiersey here. Uh, you did, um, I don't, you don't necessarily have to do this in hearing, but you, there were a few trees you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, so, um, when DPW originally, um, proposed this, uh, project, there was a total of five other trees that would probably be removed in the future. Um, so to give the full scope of what the entire project would been, we, we, uh, also marked those trees for removal. So those fell within the twenty-one trees.
So they're marked with the square papers?
Nope, they're all marked the same, and, uh, so they have the tree warders notice on them and the orange spot that the DPW had put on them. Since that point, um, which happened tonight, I went and changed the orange spots to a yellow spot. I have the list of trees here, there's a total of five of them that will probably be removed in the future. Uh, not immediately, but in the, in the near future. Um, and if we start at pole three and a half and work our way up the road, we'll say that, uh, tree number one is, uh...
Hold on, we have a little map on there. Did you print that out already?
Yeah, it's attached to your, um...
Yep.
I got it, yeah. Okay.
So if we start with, would be tree number one and work our way up the road. So that's about thirty-eight inch oak, it's right across from the common driveway.
Yep.
It's the one that has a, uh, fair amount of decay on it.
That first one.
It's more than half dead.
Yes. That... I saw that one.
We were up on Anymore Road, uh, about a year and a half ago with the contractor that had the tree trimming, uh, bit of the town. We went through and removed a fair amount of trees to make the road safe. They weren't, uh, equipped at the time with a crew that they had to tackle that tree, so we, we passed that tree up. Um, but because, like I mentioned, uh, the DPW will, I want to give everybody the full scope of what was going to happen on the roadway. So in the future, that tree, uh, we, we'd be removed. And you skip up the road a little ways up to around the first corner, uh, which is, uh, tree number seven, which is a fourteen-inch hickory. Uh, it's between poles number nine and ten. Uh, we use pole numbers to identify the trees, um, because poles happen within, within every two hundred feet.
So is it on the left side of the road?
It is on the left side of the road as you're going up.
So right on the bend?
Right after the bend.
Yep.
And it's, uh, a fourteen-inch hickory, it's pretty well rotted. In fact, uh, our partition, our partition notice is actually in, like, the cavity of the tree.
Yeah.
Um, so that is going to be removed in the, in the near future. That's the only one that poses a threat to, like, someone's car that's parked in the driveway. All these other trees that we pass up aren't threats necessarily, other than maybe falling into the woods or, or onto someone's grass. So across the street from that, uh, is, there's two, uh, hickories as well. Uh, tree number eight, which is an eleven-inch hickory. Um, that is a co-dominant tree. Both of the, tree eight and nine come out of the same stump. Tree nine has a fair amount of internal decay and rot. Tree eight is somewhat healthy as far as it's leafed out. There is some lower root damage to it, but once you remove tree nine, tree eight will probably have, will, 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 will know that there's probably a fair amount of root damage and it's not, it's not worthy of trying to keep it. So that tree nine is the, um, excuse me, the tree eight is the eleven-inch one, and tree nine is the sixty-inch one. The sixty-inch tree, uh, has structural issues and it gets on the right-hand side of poles nine and ten. And then the last tree that, uh, will probably be removed in the, in the future is, uh, tree number twenty, which is a fourteen-inch maple. Uh, it has material structural issues, you can see the decay up about eye level. There's some little bit of damage down low, but the important thing about this tree is that it leans out over the roadway, and we need, as a municipality, need to maintain thirteen-six from the edge of pavement, a visual line of thirteen and a half feet for trucks. You can see where this tree, this tree has been hit in the past, and that would be the other tree that would, uh, would go in the future.
So is that on the right side?
It is on the right-hand side.
First in the group of three?
Nope, it's, it's down pretty far, it's the second to last, uh, it's the second to last tree.
Okay.
It's on the straightaway near, um, the conservation land.
Okay.
There's another maple in close proximity to it, it's the, it's the second maple, it's what it would be. And those are the, the total of five trees that we would probably be removing in the future.
Mark, is that fourteen-inch maple between certain utility poles that...
Yes, I'm sorry, so, uh, the fourteen-inch maple, um, is across from pole number sixteen.
That's the last one you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. And, I mean, for dead trees, we don't really need to have a hearing.
We, we don't, but since we are, are open to hearing, we're talking about these trees who probably would have been removed in the future if we hadn't had this hearing.
Yeah.
But because of the potential impact of the total project on Anymore Run, I had to post them so that everybody could get a full scope of what was going to happen.
Yep. Yeah. I mean, I know we all walked out on the road and, uh, we understood people's concerns about, you know, the scenic quality of the road and the trees going over it, so I think this is good to pare it down and just take care of the ones that are an imminent threat and, uh, you know, keeping the character of the road.
There are some very statement trees up there that are in very good health.
Right. I don't think there's much more to say. Not sure we need to open it up to comments since there's nothing under discussion. Unless somebody has something really they want to say, but, you know, DPW, for those who walked in late, I don't know if you haven't heard DPW pull.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, DPW pulled their, uh...
So this, what was that, so it's only the...
Say your name.
I'm Julie Ozide. Thank you. O Z E Y.
Yes, so DPW pulled their overall plan of all the trees and widening the road. I don't know if it was based on emails or what it was, but he pulled it today. Um, but as Mark said, there's still, you know, being the tree warder, there's still trees of concern.
Five.
Five, yeah. That hearing, a no hearing, or, you know, he probably would have wanted to remove anyway.
What happens to the wood?
So, uh, when the trees get removed, typically, the adjacent landowner is the first to write a refusal. After that, if there's a resident, uh, personally that goes, that lives on the street, I, I look at that, that being, you drive by it every day, you should also have the second chance to get the wood. But, um, it is available for the, um, the public. The issue we have is we cannot leave any of the wood roadside. Um, it, it, but if someone in the neighborhood or even across town wanted it, it would be, it would be dropped off at their property.
Oh, right.
We chip, depending on which contractor we use, a lot of these will just be chipped off site, there wouldn't be wood left. Some of the contracts that we have require that they have a minimum of an eighteen-inch chip or so. Trees that are, you know, this, pretty much all except one is going to get chipped.
All except one would have to be chipped, okay.
There might be some linwood or smallwood that, that the homeowner right there's still, can I have some of that? Yes, by all means.
So does, does this mean that the road...
Could you state your name?
Uh, can't be, well, it should, so this means the paving is going, is off the table now?
I believe that's correct, right, Erica? She asked, is paving's off the table?
I, I, that's a question for DPW, I just know that the scenic road hearing is, that's off the table.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I guess we still, so, um, you know, if we wanted state money, it's not a road that qualifies for state money, so the town will have to do, do it with their own funds. So I guess it's not off the table, it's just if we have the funds to do it. They were just trying to plan ahead and, um, allow it so it could be included in state, you know, a potential for state funds. Do you know anything about that, Mark?
Um, that may or may not be a hundred percent accurate.
Okay.
And that's, that's part of the issue, probably why it, it got pulled.
Okay. Oh, you're saying it doesn't have to meet something for state funds?
There, there seems to be some discrepancy, uh, with that.
Okay.
And, uh, I think that's probably why the, uh, the petition had been pulled.
Okay.
So did you remove the other signs, the signs on the trees?
No signs have been removed, you can't do that until after the hearing's been called.
But later in the week they'll be removed.
Yes, they'll be removed, but like I mentioned, all the, the five trees that we talked about now have, the orange spot has been changed to a yellow spot.
Okay.
So if DPW decides to come back and, and, and want to take, you know, one hearing on the, the remaining sixteen trees, the signs will have to go back up, everybody will be noticed again, and we'll have another hearing at that point. They may or may not go and pave, you know, all of that is a separate issue that's for DPW to, to, to address, but, the, the trees, at least, sixteen of the trees at least for the time being are safe, so.
I agree.
Eric? Um, when, the question for Mark is, Nancy Schindler, Bolton Independent, um, when he says, "in the near future", can you be more specific?
Well, we have a very limited budget for a tree rule to cover the whole entire town. And like I mentioned earlier, about a year and a half ago, we went through with, with a contractor and sort of made the road safe, took care of some dead overhead branches, removed some smaller trees. The only one that would probably, if I can get a crew out there, then I would like to keep them in one spot and take care of the five trees at one time, but I think we're going to be looking pretty closely at trying to get that thirty-eight inch oak done relatively soon. I would assume that would probably be this, this, for a year. Um, but we have to prioritize the trees throughout the whole entire town, and unfortunately, thirty-one houses on a dead-end road is down a few notches versus trees that are overhanging one seventeen. So, uh, I have to sort of like do triage on, and see which ones are the worst. And Mill Pond, yeah. But, uh, I would, that's why I say in the near future, I'm not exactly sure. I would say that that bigger oak would probably be removed this, this, for a year.
Brought your tires on the way home?
Yes.
The thirty-inch one, that's the one that's really dead up front?
Yes, that's a nut tree number one, it's right at pole thirty-nine.
Uh, didn't you say the second tree was the one that had the biggest risk of falling onto a car?
The second tree that we talked about here, which is pole, uh, pole number seven, it's not going to fall on a car, it's going to fall into the neighbor's house, uh, and...
Well, that's okay.
The car would be probably in their driveway.
Well, let's not worry about that.
Well, that's, that's why I said that, that needs to be addressed as well.
Well, nobody's asking, quote, "which neighbor"?
It's not your house, you're safe.
Okay, I think we're good.
Eric, I would just recommend that there's a vote to accept, uh, DPW's withdrawal, and then there also needs to be a motion to close the hearing.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept DPW's withdrawal of your petition to remove twenty-one trees.
Uh, second.
On favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Much easier than I thought it was going to be. No Andy this week? Erica? No Andy?
He is, um, he was away. I didn't receive an email saying that he was away, and unfortunately, he just, he didn't give me an update on the, um, authority.
I'm sure there's no update. So... Next up, we have the Plan and Board to discuss the Affordable Housing Payment to be submitted to Bolton's Affordable Housing Trust on the fortieth occupancy period permit. The builder of twenty-five, is it twenty-five or twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Lot twenty-six. Lot twenty-six.
Lot twenty-six with twenty-five Old Stone Circle.
Oh.
The builder of twenty-five, the builder of twenty-five Old Stone Circle, lot twenty-six, is seeking a forty-second occupancy. The Board to weigh in on the sign of this permit. Okay, so back in where we were the same state we were last meeting. I assume Andy didn't do anything with the appraisal. So we're kind of still waiting for that second one. So you're the lawyer, builder?
I'm the lawyer, he's the builder.
You want to come up? Andy's son, or?
Yeah.
So, I mean, so last week we had the same situation where we released one lot. We have, we have to figure out, hold on, I'm sorry, I mean, we have to figure out how we're going to hold Andy. Until, I mean, I know he feels like he's paid what he should pay, but we, we have to hold him to, uh, you know, to make that payment. So, I mean, at the minimum... You can't shut up. You don't have to go home, you can't stay here.
Must be some very nice trees.
Yes. Very nice trees. So I know he has a lot, so that would be, what lot is it, is twenty-eight?
Uh, Andy's lot?
Yeah.
He has a house on Mill Pond Road, I believe it's thirty-nine Mill Pond Road, which he's built, but he has not received an occupancy for at present.
Right. So just speaking in general, not yard law specifically, at a bare minimum, we need to hold that one. And then I know Erica talked about potentially holding the road acceptance, uh, until that matter's settled, which I'm sure the neighbors won't be happy about. My opinion on this lot is that, um, we're kind of the precedent set that we handed out, you know, so...
I just think that we should be clear, because you asked the question to start off, and it's a fair question.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
This, this is a totally, he's not the sole owner, he owns it in an LLC with another... These are two young guys that decided to try their hand at building a house and developing it, and it's a totally arms-length transaction. The other gentleman is, is not related to, to Andy at all. They paid fair market value almost two years ago, and they've sort of done this on their own. So, and I have all the documents you want to see, but, and I, it is a totally arms-length transaction for, for James and his, his frontier. And they bought it in an LLC, they took out a mortgage, they paid fair market value. And there is an issue, and I spoke to Erica today about it. There is an issue, there is an issue with the driveway of DPW.
Yep.
So what we're really seeking is that you authorize Erica to sign off when DPW says the driveway is okay.
We're actually working with Brandon.
Oh, you are, okay.
Which, 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 so, which lots are left, Erica? So there's, there's five or six of them, right?
For occupancy?
Yeah.
Um, I...
So twenty-five A, is this twenty-five we're talking about now? Twenty-six. I'm all messed up now. All right, twenty-six. I know we had that mapped last week, if you don't have it, that's fine. Thirty-nine, I think, is one of them, or did we just do thirty-nine?
I mean, we, we, we had applied at the last hearing that if it was someone that, who, okay, what was the exact wording that we had talked about?
I think I should also just make clear, I don't represent Andy, I don't represent anybody else in the subdivision.
It, it was more of just, you know, I mean, if they're seeking a certificate of occupancy, um, and I'm just, I'm just trying to remember exactly what we had stated about why we would be okay with going forward with, you know, approving another one, even though Andy hasn't paid the affordable, you know, we haven't gotten that taken care of.
Well, I don't think, I think we approved that one, and we kind of said, we'll get to the other ones when they come up to us. I don't think we made any decision on the other ones.
No, I'm trying to remember the wording of what we had stated with the one last week, our last week hearing.
Yeah, I don't think we...
We had no conditions.
We had no conditions.
That's what you're asking.
Yeah. I mean, just, I don't know, we have four or five lots. I mean, we changed this whole bylaw, so it's a building permit now, it's, you know, moving forward, because we don't want to be put into this situation.
Which, well, it's still not sufficient, but...
Yeah.
And the town, Erica, in other cities and towns about Delaware, often you get a letter of credit.
A letter of credit for?
Does that work?
For the Affordable Housing Payment. Applying, applying for the building, I mean, you have to post a letter of, a letter of credit for, for the Affordable Housing Payment.
So it's kind of like putting up a bond, sort of?
Right, so if the developer defaults, you go after the one they're providing. It's an idea for future.
Yeah, I mean, we're in a situation where Andy could kind of walk away and then, you know, we're short money, whether he believes that he owes money or not.
Is that from last week?
Yeah, it's from last week.
So these are all the...
So, so, I mean, yeah, whether, I mean, whether he walks away, whether, I mean, if he sold off phase one and walked away, you know, it's, you know, it's the person that buys it, going to know that there's these outstanding things, so...
Right.
I mean, I'd prefer to either get, you know, ultimately get liens on the number of lots that are, you know, that, that they owed on, or that they have to put up a, a bond or something upfront that would cover, you know, to make sure that if it gets sold off or, you know, I mean, if somebody went and sold, you know, twenty of the, you know, if he went and sold the lots off to individuals, you know, who, who does the town go after to recover the Affordable?
The problem is, not the problem that James did, is, I think, until last week, or two weeks ago, when you did lot forty-one, the forty-first, C of L.
Yeah.
Nobody, he didn't even know this was an issue.
Well, his dad certainly has, but I'm, I'm not blaming, I'm not, not, not putting the sins of your dad on you, but I mean, I would...
That's what I was just, I'm thinking, you could, you could set it better than I could. But the point is that there is no notice to a bona fide purchaser in an arms-length transaction, so they don't know, like, when he bought this two years ago, he didn't know about it, he didn't know about it till two weeks ago. Like, when he bought this two years ago, he didn't know about, he didn't know about until two weeks ago, I think, when you did the other lot, forty-one, it was the first time we became aware of it. And frankly, that's why I'm here with him, because I just want to be clear that he really is a separate entity for this purpose and has done this on his own with his friend Peter. I think you forgot Peter's last name.
Given.
Given.
Do you guys have a buyer ready or no? Plus is built.
What?
Plus is built.
How?
Yeah, ready. And it's funny, a broker called me, because after he took up two weeks, there's someone interested, they're all nervous now because of what happened here two weeks ago. So it, it's sort of a, it has a chilling effect, and that's why we're here tonight.
That's what we need to actually go through a certificate of occupancy, so, well, we need to show people that we can, that there's not an issue.
Yeah, no.
I, I wasn't even aware of it, so I was like, that's weird.
I'm not sure we need to make, like, a definitive vote tonight about Andy's lot, but, I mean, that's my opinion, you know. I think we have to just let these lots go and hold Andy's and, and Erica suggested that we even.
Hold the road acceptance.
Hold the road acceptance.
Well, I mean, I mean, yeah, there's so many, there's other things that you're gonna hold that up to, but.
Yeah, I mean, like, you only have a month to pay it. Or a month and a half. So, I mean, I feel like we let this lot go. If anybody else has any opinions.
No, I agree. We've set the precedent.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, even, even ignoring the precedent, I mean, you know, and we can't, I mean.
It's just such an awful position.
It, it is, you know, it's, this is very important.
Should be on the stuff. Let's hear our motion now. And when you do it, make it conditional, so he's alluded, I'm not sure if you want to.
Yes, it's conditional to the DPW signing off on the driveway.
Right, the driveway, uh, which we're gonna angle, what would you say, driveway angle or?
So.
Well, just the driveway in general, so, well, it's a slope, it's a drain, it's just, you know.
When DPW says it's acceptable, then Eric can sign.
Then, then they could, yeah. So. But the motion is, is it to, um?
Grant the certificate of occupancy, uh, conditional on DPW's accepting it.
I also make a motion to grant the certificate of occupancy to twenty-five old stone, old stone circle conditioned upon the DPW's sign off on the driveway.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you for your understanding, while I know it's a difficult, you are in a difficult situation, and we appreciate you.
Good luck with the house.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Erica.
Yeah, he first got into voting when I was nine years old.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's been here all the time.
One forty-seven is canceled, right?
I mean, do we want to talk anymore about what we're doing with these, I mean, is this what everyone, everyone who has a lot is gonna come and ask for this?
I have a feeling. If they, if they hear word, why wouldn't they?
Yeah. So, I mean, with phase one, like, can't we, can we hold lots in that? I mean, what, what leverage do we have at this point?
Right now, for phase one, the surety that is in place for that phase is a covenant, so essentially Andy can sell the property, but they can't build it. So that's how those lots are sort of under our control.
So the units are tied to specific phases? Or just?
I'm sorry, I see that.
Well, no, I mean, we're just talking about, there's the entire property, right, it's split into phases, but the, the numbers we're talking about are just like at the twentieth CO, at the fortieth CO, at the sixtieth CO. So we, I mean, so now we've gone past the fortieth CO, I mean, don't we have the right to hold on to a lot as, because that's really what it was, it's an affordable lot, right, he could donate the lot.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So can we take one of those lots from phase one? Is that not in the?
That's, I mean, that's, I guess, a question for town council, what our leverage is, what our authority is regarding the condition in the permit that, you know, states it could be a lot or a fee in lieu. I, I'm certainly happy to reach out to town council to see if, if we have the prerogative to make a lot.
It would be good, it would be good to ask, what are the options?
Yeah.
You, a, a, with the idea that we could very well see all the rest of the people, you know, come in and ask for these certificate of occupancies.
Yeah.
Um, knowing that we don't have this last affordable payment.
So why don't I reach out to town council, see if they have any recommendations, or if they could pick us something outside the box for us?
Yeah, that would be great.
I mean, it seems like, like, us holding or at least having liens on the phase one lots, I mean, he's actively trying to sell those.
I thought he said, I thought it was looked at that we couldn't hold a lien, or something like that.
A lot?
A lot.
Town council?
Well, yeah, I, I think, um, segment suggests maybe taking a lot and then dating it back to him when, but, and, and that got, that got.
Didn't town council say we could do that?
That was like a temporary thing, I remember.
That was for, basically for the, um, for the road acceptance, we wanted to have a certain amount of money in case, and, and that was the reasoning for it, but I thought, no matter what, it's not something we could do.
Yes, that was. Yeah.
Well, we could, we could do it, town council didn't recommend it for a couple of reasons, number one, it's not liquid.
Okay.
So it's not like you could just turn around and get money to complete the road, that was the biggest thing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Secondly, it's located in a different phase, so it doesn't have the same ties of it or a lot within that thing.
So. So then maybe your thought is actually okay, because this would be only for affordable housing, not for liquidation towards a road.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe you're right, maybe this, that could be an option.
I mean.
The only little sticky, um, um, point that kind of goes along with that is the fact that, um.
You're not meeting tonight.
Uh, those lots also are, um, in tax title, or actually are being paid fees on, um, by the town, because he owes back taxes, so.
On phase one?
Oh, yeah, basically, all of the lots that he owes.
So, so what does that mean? So he's actively trying to sell the lots, can he do that?
Well, they actually had a lien of whatever they owe the town, that would have to get paid as part of that transaction, um, so that's the thing, like, even if we were to take a lot, even if we were to sell it, we still have to pay, you know, we have to pay ourselves essentially, you know what I mean? So it's not a great situation.
But I mean, if it's that or nothing, like, what else can we hold on to, I mean, if his own, his own lot is already in, you have liens against that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
His lot, is that being foreclosed on?
Because there's no, they don't, the town generally does not foreclose on homes, because they, they're not in the business of kicking people out of their houses. However, in this situation, he has not received a CO, so they felt, and given the amount he owes, they felt comfortable.
What's the amount?
It's for his home alone, uh, on Mill Pond, it's like a hundred and three, like a hundred and thirty-something thousand, I believe.
I mean, what's, I mean, does he risk going to jail over this?
I don't know what the cost of that is.
Losing the house, I imagine, yeah.
Yeah, so we could, so, can we take the house, or, I mean?
That's, that's what we're doing, we're foreclosing on it, we're just starting that process.
Yeah, but the house has got to be worth a lot more than a hundred and thirty thousand.
Right, so my, when I, and I'm, I am not the town treasurer, these are sort of questions for the town treasurer, but, or the, excuse me, the tax collector, um, mm, what I would expect to happen is that because there's mortgages on this house, the bank's gonna step in, they're not gonna want the town to take that house, they're gonna step in and pay the liens, and then, I don't know how that gets dealt with, but that's what I anticipate.
Okay, so, but.
And I could be wrong, I'm just, this is me brainstorming.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we need to accept that he's probably not gonna pay anything more, and people are gonna keep coming for COs.
He was clearly setting, setting it up as, I paid a hundred and forty, I'm done.
No, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
So then the, the question is if, I mean, if we want to try to extract more from it, then why not take it, I mean, add an additional lien to the house of whatever the, the price for the second affordable unit would be? Can we do that?
That I don't know, I'd have, again, town council would have to weigh in on what our options are.
Um, I mean, I don't like tying it to the road acceptance.
Yeah, the meme was, yeah, yeah, no.
All right, wait, it's a whole separate issue, yeah.
Yeah, that, that just hurts, yeah, I mean, if he's, if he is legitimately trying to get that piece of it done, then let's get that piece of it done.
I hope so, I really hope it's moving forward and it will be paid very soon.
I think you said at one point, um, like, that, you know, he's probably doing the math out of his head of how much money do I have to pay for work versus bond, and if it's like a tipping point, he's just gonna leave, you know, so if we could just.
But I think we worked really well with him to try to make sure he could do it, you know, so.
I think so, yeah. No, but I'm still, still, like, if it's gonna cost him to, more to do the work, then what's the bond there?
As far as I know. Yeah.
Erica, do you know if other work has been finished up up there?
Indeed, uh, he sent me an email last week with an update and really, and maybe I sent it to you, I, I don't remember now, but, um, he started uh, cleaning out the base of the stormwater structures, so that, that's mostly been done, um, and they were, um, going through the process of planting the street trees.
Right.
Which will, I'll come back to you, because I did get a couple of emails, um, from the resident disgruntled about the location of the street trees. So that's probably gonna come back for our next meeting, um.
Have they already been planted?
When, this one particular, it's actually, uh, the resident that lives at the end of Mill Pond, and at the time Fred Kuhn was gonna come back to talk to the board about the two landscape trees that he had, the resident had installed.
Okay, oh, yeah.
And then nothing came of it, they never, he left and nothing ever happened with it, well, that resident now has realized that there are gonna be two additional street trees in front of his house and he was upset about it, so he wanted to ask if he could come before you to sort of plead his case not to have them installed, so.
And we were supposed to potentially compromise that were there as?
We did, I think we did count, we counted some of them.
Well, we. We didn't, not the ones in front of his property, because Fred Kuhn didn't ask us to at the time, when we did that site visit, we were really only focused on the ones that they were pointing out to us, can we use this one, you know?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay.
Um, so.
What are the ones that he has planted?
What type of tree?
Yeah.
I, I, I honestly don't recall, um.
Okay.
But I do think that you should talk to town council.
I will.
What are our options?
So I mean, it's all kind of tied together to some degree to the partial road, because if you look, there are subdivision rules and regs, and Andy has known this for forever, I mean, when we met back in January, I had a whole punch list of things that needed to get done for the partial road. One of the requirements is that he has to pay his taxes.
No, I remember you mentioning that.
You know what I mean, so if he pays his taxes, then that maybe does kind of free up the lots to use that as a potential.
Yeah.
You know, payment.
So paying, that's part of the road acceptance?
Yeah, no, I remember you being at the hearing, or, excuse me, at the site visit, saying that.
It's a maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
And that's in the, that's not something that just, that's not our regulations.
It sounds like he's way over. I don't know where he is, and I don't want to be alone, but it sounds like he's way over his head. I don't know. It's a mess.
All right, well, let's, so do we need to say anything about the continuation of?
One forty-seven?
One forty-seven? So just, just so that I'm clear, I'm moving forward, um, if, if another CO comes for, a request for CO comes forward, I'm bringing it before the board?
Yeah, yeah.
Or we're tying it to, so we're, okay.
No, bring, I'd say.
They bring before, yeah, I, I think we need to make sure, I mean, the last sweep we let through, because they were not, I mean, if, if somebody bought the lot and then had Andy build it, that's not, you know, I don't, I'm not sure that would fly the same as, as the, the, these other two.
There's actually an issue with, um, with lot twenty, lot twenty, I'm sorry, lot twenty-five on Old Stone, which is right next to the, the home that we just talked about.
You mentioned it's non-conforming, right, or something?
No, the issue is that, so the board, um, a couple of years ago, um, voted to release the lot from the covenant. However, as part of that process, and this has been standard for, you know, ten years, um, once it's released from the covenant, I hold on to the paperwork that's signed by the board until they post the surety, and it's, that surety is the full amount divided by the number of lots, so every time they go for, um, a building permit, they submit a check. I give them the lot release form, they, they sign it, they get it recorded, they bring it back, I sign off on a building permit. That's been the process. Um, I realized when I was figuring out what was left for COs and building permits and all of that, that that lot, twenty-five, twenty, um, five was sold without the lot release form being signed, well, the, the surety being posted, being signed and recorded. So I'm not sure how that happened and.
So that should have created a lien situation, shouldn't it?
So he sold it to his, I do know, when I looked at the deed, he sold it to his accountant for a dollar, so I'm guessing that he owed his accountant money and gave her the lot. But it still should have had the lot release form and the surety posted for it.
And did, did he do the building on it, or did somebody else?
Was it just a lot?
Well, that's the other thing that gets a little hairier, so there is a house on it, because at the time, before he sold this to the, uh, the accountant, um, they had asked that, um, they do a model home. And for the covenant, he's allowed to do up to three model homes, so I have to sign off, I mean, that's the agreement, so I allowed them to do a model home, if you look at my sign off on the building permit application, it says model home. Um, so there is a house there. Obviously, no CO has been issued, but still, you know, it's, it's again, like, ugh. Yeah, like, why wasn't that brought to my attention, why did I have to go looking for it on the registry of deeds to figure that out?
It's all part of his master.
And I did mention it to him, and I told him that we needed to discuss it, but I, I haven't been able to get ahold of him.
What was the? Yeah, what was the amount, like, the surety amount?
Um, it's, so, it's much smaller, it's like, I don't remember the exact amount, but it's around six thousand, seven thousand.
I mean, he's, he's just, he's really good at slowly taking stuff from us and, like, backing us into a corner, that's what I feel like.
Well, yeah, and that's why I think, you know, taking from phase one seems.
Yeah, and I have, I'm, if, if they were to try to come forward and get a CO for that particular lot, even though he doesn't own it, I'm fully comfortable saying, no way. For a couple of reasons, surety hasn't been posted, you need to record that lot release form.
For which one, so for?
Or twenty-five. And we, and we need, and we need the, the payment, so I would definitely hold up that one as well.
Okay. Right, so.
And, and, and I don't think that, I'm not sure that counts as an arms-length transaction, that one dollar, you know.
Yeah, is it, what, what we just talked about?
Right, yeah.
Is anyone living there?
No, I, well, I hope not, there's just, yeah, um.
Well, I mean, you don't need a CO to, to live somewhere.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, if they are, they're not living there legally.
You need to legally, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it still, but it's not still a model house for the, or they obviously don't need a model house.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know how that works. I mean, just because she owns it doesn't mean it, it could still be a model home.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, taking it case by case, I guess, kind of.
Uh, yeah, I would say just have him keep coming in front of us, um, until we.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm, how, how many more do you think are, will, are any others in the process of getting close?
Um, I'd have to look, I apologize, I, I don't have the complete list in front of me. At least two.
You have a list, yeah. So nine, what is it?
So, last time we did, what, lot nineteen?
I mean, I'm not the, interested in lots so much, just like, are they close to being completed?
Just maybe a total of six and two of them already.
No, there, there, there's five owned by others and, and two of them are done, so there's three more, there's another lot, this list is owned by Andy, and then twenty-five A.
Oh, that's.
Which is the one we just talked about.
Which is the one we just talked about, yeah. So forty-nine A is owned by Andy.
Yeah.
Um, and the original list was nineteen, twenty-six, thirty-nine, fourteen, fifty-two.
I think forty was.
Was it forty, uh, whichever one it was last night, but two of them are gone, so there's maybe three more, so.
Yeah.
We just handle, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Long Hill Road, um, you don't need to leave, we're not talking about it.
I was just gonna ask, do we need to state that it was continued, or?
Yeah, I would state that, yeah.
Yeah, uh, well, they asked, they asked to, you know, push it, because they don't have the as-built plan yet.
Or that driveway sketch that was asked for.
Yeah, or the driveway, what is it, the sketch, what? Oh.
To the first forty feet?
Yeah, yep.
The additional spot rights, just that they agree with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so we'll talk about that again on October ninth.
Correct.
Uh, and then master plan discussion, so we got, we got resume, so we have Sia from last, I say her name right, Sia?
Kia, uh, Kia.
Kia. I always gonna want to say Chia. So we have her, you know, Brian Boyle, I think would be a great addition, and have somebody who intricately understands the impact of any thing to the town finances, so Brian is the perfect person for that, I believe. Paul Romer, he was pretty, pretty instrumental in the last master plan. And he knows everything about Bolton, I think, so, I think he's good. Of the area. Big resume. Kevin Weedock. So he's, he lives over at Oak Trail, right?
Yeah, and he also, um, he's president of the International.
Yeah.
So I had reached out, I thought that, um.
That'd be good to have a business.
Right, exactly, that's why I reached out to him, because I felt like we should have business represented on the plan, or on the committee.
And, um, I've seen him talk about a few different things, so I think he has a different perspective than other people in town, so that's where.
Yeah, I mean, I've never met him before, but, um, I think it'll be a good next.
Yeah.
His son is, his son's.
Mary Cuomo, I think she's good to have since she's on the, uh, public ways committee, so that's a good perspective to have, tying, tying things together and mobility issues. Ken Troop. Everybody knows Ken Troop. Chris Rogers, that is.
Board of Health?
Oh, Board of Health, yeah, that's good. Board of Health in here would be good for, uh, septic. Those type of discussions, oh, that's a pretty good mix of people.
It's, it seems like really good, it's a good spread like across the board.
Yeah, Penny from a selectman, uh, heavily involved with the seniors, which is great to be represented. And Kia and Michelle Gouving. I'm sure I know her. Twenty one years, settled here after marriage. Small business owner. Children's schools. Sounds good. Seems, is this, is this somebody who hasn't been involved, it seems, so.
I don't believe so, I don't think so.
So that's, that's good.
And it was, I think that's great, it's a resident that can kind of bring.
That's what I'm saying. Doesn't, I wasn't, I wasn't saying that as a bad.
Yeah, no, yeah.
It's good to get to.
Yeah, you're getting somebody, some people other than the usual suspects.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
It's good, yeah, so they can help things crushed.
Yeah.
Did you reach out to the, um, winery at all?
I did, and he said, he was really funny. He sent me an email back saying, I don't do well on committees. I was like, that's fine, but he did say that, um, feel free to reach out to him, because obviously we will if there's something that comes up.
Oh, I was just thinking, because the International's a huge, you know, and I was thinking the winery and I was just, you know.
Yeah, no, I did. I was very fair, I reached out to quite a few different business owners.
Okay.
I also reached out to like Patterson, but he's moving to New Hampshire, so.
That's right, kids?
He, um, bought a farm up there, so that's his next venture, I guess.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow.
Yeah, um.
That's cool. Built his, built six two six for his sons and now he's moving on.
Gonna build a farm.
Yeah.
Hey.
This is so funny, 'cause I, uh, you know, when he was working on this project, he was, he was like, you know, I had this nice short hair and everything. Now, like I see, he walked up to me at the Bolton Bean the other day and he's like, this long hair, I was like, I didn't even recognize him.
Yeah.
It's like he turned into a hippie or something.
That he's, that he, he self-claimed, he said that he is a hippie, so.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Cool. Um.
So how many people?
Uh, I'm sorry, Molly Myers.
So Molly Myers, um, I just received her, this, this email of interest, um, and it's outside the, the timeframe that I allotted for people to send in their, their letters, so I don't know how the board wants to handle this one.
I don't really know, I'm probably taking.
I would think that, yeah.
I don't know how, you know, strict we're gonna be about that, I mean, it was.
Well, do we even, we don't have eleven, right?
To be honest with you, it was sort of an arbitrary date I just picked.
Yeah.
Well, that, that was just, how many people did we say?
Eleven, right now, there are nine and then Molly would be ten.
Eleven. Yeah.
That's awesome.
So we still, so I don't know, how does the board wanna handle that? Do you want to re-advertise, to try and get to eleven?
I think so, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, I guess I, I'd say we don't have anybody from planning on here, so.
Okay.
I would throw many on that.
Do, do.
Ooh, okay. There we go, number eleven.
Yeah.
Uh, well.
Lucky number eleven, no.
Yeah, I'm already on the, uh, housing production committee, I can't.
You're on the housing production, you're on economic development, you're, yeah.
If I told my wife, I was on the estate planning, I would have to move out of Bolton, my house.
Yeah.
Alright, then we have our group. Yeah, this is wonderful, yeah.
I agree with that. But, and you have, um.
Board of Health. Board of Health, ConCon, so, yeah, I've, I've, I've done a little bit here.
Yeah, yeah, selectmen.
I have some, after the meeting, um, some questions to ask you regarding to Board of Health.
So, um, I guess in general, this committee reports to the planning board, right? So that's why I wasn't pushing anybody on the board to do it, because I thought like they would come to us and we would give them feedback, but I would, do think it would have.
It would be good to have someone at the meetings that can be there at all, because I think that would be really good.
To have that perspective.
That's great, so I'm very happy that we filled the committee.
I'm sure you'd want it. So, so Molly is, so what is?
Oh, I apologize, I can't get jumped at.
No, it's fine.
Oh, she's done planning for parks in her neighborhood and stuff like that, so that's great. Hey, I think it's just awesome that there's such a broad range of people there.
It does seem like they're mixed.
Yeah.
And it's not all from one pocket, so.
Yeah, you would hate, you would hate for it to be, you know, very one note.
Yeah.
So you start down the list and, you know, it's everybody who's been doing it for, you know, which isn't bad in some ways, but giving some fresh perspective is, is really.
It seems good, and then, um, so when they create, I guess it's up to the steering committee, but when they create their subgroups, could they get like?
More people?
More people in those.
That, that was, that was the whole plan, is that there are people who may be interested in.
Just doing a small piece of that.
One piece that, you know, that they wanna come in, do that one piece, and they don't wanna.
So Laura Roberts, for instance, emailed me, you know, said that she's very interested in Parks and Rec, do I have to go for the steering committee?
Yeah, so she would be a good person to be on.
She would just wanna jump in that specific one.
Right, yeah, and that's why we kind of organize that way with, with, you know, with the steering committee and then all the subgroups. You know, it was like the housing production plan will be leveraged.
Yeah, right.
You know, for, for that part of the, the master plan.
And maybe, and maybe the group that we have for that production plan could be tasked to, you know, dig in another area of housing or something.
Possibly, or, you know, Parks and Rec, there'll be kind of a different set of people that, that, you know, are interested in that, that have no interest in,
But the steering.
you know, housing production, you know, so the steering committees, yeah, exactly.
But the steering committee will create the flow.
Yeah, no, I think we have a really good mix, because Bob Romer, he sort of represents the conserva, you know, the conservation trust
Yeah.
and we really needed that aspect. The only thing that I, I tried to get and it just didn't work out was I wanted someone like to represent like the agricultural community, but it just, you know, well, well, I'm certainly gonna reach out to the ad commission to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, but Laura.
Laura seems like very much interested in.
So.
Yeah. Maybe that can be part of all the subcommittees, we could try to see if we can get someone on the subcommittees a little bit more active, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, sounds great, so, so what's the, what's the next, so.
Alright.
So Board of Selectmen will weigh in at their next, well, Don will give an, give them an update on where we're at with, with the committee. Um, and then from there, I, I, you know, and I'll talk to Don tomorrow about it to make sure we're on the same page, but I think after that, the next meeting, we can appoint this, this group.
So do we appoint him here, do we have to do it jointly, or?
I don't think so, no, you can just do it at your meeting and then.
As long as the selectmen are, don't have any concerns.
Yeah, that's, that's why I asked Don to kind of give brief them on it, because if they have concerns, then I'll let you know.
So just make sure you include Mark in the, yeah, yeah.
I will, I'll send out an update tomorrow, because I don't have my.
So say, you know, we have eleven, let us know if you have any concerns about any of them, otherwise we'll accept them.
Yeah. At the next meeting, and then from there, I'm hoping to schedule the first meeting in October, get this thing rolling.
Right.
Wow, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Are you shooting for monthly, every two weeks, like, oh, yeah?
I don't know, I don't know yet. I did reach out to Dave Yasway and, um, Pat Gray and.
Yeah, I was, she was all gung ho for a while there and then disappeared.
She doesn't wanna be on the committee, but she said she'd be happy to.
I mean, they're open meetings, so.
Weigh in on the things that she had previously done, the resources she had previously done.
Yeah.
And then Dave, they potentially could be interested, but then never followed, you know, didn't send the follow-up email, so I assume he decided not to, so.
Sounds like a Dave response. Yeah, yeah.
Get back to him.
Get back to him.
Alright.
On that note.
Wait, do we have, do we have any minutes or?
I apologize, it's been a little hectic, I apologize.
Alright, we're good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.